Okay, thank you. Thanks everybody for coming. This is more leading through city council. I'm in commission, appreciate all the hard work you folks do. For us in this community every single day. It makes our job much easier than facing law. Understanding of looking at things you folks work on with the community without getting slammed. So this time we'll put on the number of the chair and do it on identity. And then I'm going to turn. Oh, I do have to do a little call, sorry. All right, start off with a little call, okay? Mayor Proton, are you here?
Yeah.
Councilor Rambark, you here?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Spears, are you here?
Here.
Councilor Waddell, you here?
Here.
Councilor Manders, you here?
Here.
And Councilor Rejorder? So ask him an excuse and the chair's here. Everybody's here to counter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone. First item in the agenda is the role of planning commission. I understand that this was an item, especially with the fact that the mission that probably pretty first of all have. Mr. Evans, the city attorney, go over this specific role of the commission.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate it. You're you're gonna be okay now, I mean, thank John. Good morning. Our remarks on this are pretty brief, but the way the planning commission is set up in Wilmington is different out of the office state. Every place is just a little bit different, but. The city capital Wilmington is established instead of the planning commission. They have three main things that they review. First and foremost and most commonly are rezoning applications. That's the bulk of the work that the planning commission sees. They also see road closure applications before they come to city council. And finally, they see. Text amendments to land development before they come to city council. Every once in a while, there's an additional item. They'll see. Revisions to. The larger development plans like River Place and River Vice that will also come through by a commission. When they get to city council, those are the main things to come through and Jason will have to get it.
I just sort of kind of that we need to.
What is that? Absolutely, yeah.
Say again. What else?
Just what we did, we helped out with our redoing.
Which was, which was a big task, but those are the main tasks of the planning commission. The planning commission is advisory to city council. And from my experience working with the bodies, I know the council takes the recommendations of the planning commission very seriously. They do a very thorough job of making a lot of projects that come through for their ultimate, make their way to the council. That's kind of an overview and I'm sure I'll have to answer your questions if anybody think that.
Sean, on the webpage, there's also that fourth bullet that says advise the city council on long range policies and plans. What? What does the council interpret that to be? What was the intent of that? That duty?
Great question, Jack. My interpretation of that is work on plans such as the comprehensive plan. Every eight to ten years, you said the city goes through and kind of redoes that and without redoes it, but updates it. And it's sending. It's a community engagement project as well as would involve the planning commission at city council. And I think Brian and Levin may address some of that a little bit later in their presentation a little bit, but I think that process is probably going to be starting up in a period of good.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, especially the city council members, what are some of the qualifications you think make the best? Planning commissioners as far as the value that we bring to our recommendations?
The planning vision, in my opinion, is probably. Most important board of commissions we have, we're charged with. Pointing people to. And. While it's. It's favorable to see a lot of people on the server. I think that unlike city council where it used to be a ditch litter or a lawyer or whatever, you get elected to city council. And that's good. But. With planning commission, you're vetting, you're vetting the plans that staff has. Vetted, made their recommendations along the public before we do. I think it's incumbent upon us to put. The right mix of people on that planning commission. I have engineer, attorney. People that have worked in the nonprofit sector and I could go on and on and on. That that have come on that board with an understanding of the ordinances and how everything works. So that's, those are the people that I personally just drill down on when I see applications, people that I think that can jump right in and get the ground running on day one.
I'll add, I'll add to that. First, I want to thank all of you for. Being willing to serve on the planning commission and truly voluntary capacity. I know it takes a lot of time and and sometimes it's it's needless time, but we appreciate it. I certainly do. I lean on my personal vision. I lean on the planning commission to dig into the technical. Aspects of everything that's before you and I typically go back and watch your planning meeting, commission meetings prior to a city council meeting. And oftentimes, I'm a little frustrated that you asked the questions that I wanted to ask beforehand. That's an answer to there, so I don't get the chance to ask the questions I wanted to. But I think that's the most important thing to me, that all of you are professionals in your own regard, your own. In your own practices and you bring that spectrum of intellect and intelligence and experience into the planning commission. And you dig into it with that. Skill set that you may have and and really focus on the technical aspects of land development code and how to. How to use that, how to interpret every single rezoning or future plan through that, how to change it when necessary. So that's how I, however, we need to make that better. I'm open to and I I'm. Personally, very happy that this meeting came together. I think we should do it annually. Maybe not when the building is on fire, but another time. But ultimately, that's my vision that I, and I think we do it well. But hopefully, what comes out of this meeting to me is how can we do it better? How can we get more streamlined and continue to be on the same page?
I agree. Charlie, I think that we need a variety of skill sets, a variety of people. I think we also need to. Help. Bring up members of the public who might be interested in serving on learning about what these different boards and commissions do. And I think we're, we're working on that. And I think we also have to, I think we have to have more open. Open government transparency and be advertising these positions when they come open to let people know, hey, if you're interested. This is something that we're looking for and to let a bigger pool of applicants have the opportunity to apply. Also advertising all of the boards and commissions on our city calendar so that people can. Can go to a meeting, so that citizens can go to a meeting and see what the planning board does, see what the tree commission does. I previously served on a historic preservation commission and I saw the little notice in the, in. It was a newspaper that that comes out from what are the government meetings this week? And I saw that there was a historic preservation meeting. I thought, I'm really interested in that. And I'm, I'm not an architect and I'm not a historic preservationist by trade, but I'm an interested member of the community that wants to help shape. How this community goes. And so I went there and I actually had to go through an interview process and. And and got on the historic preservation commission and it was a great experience. So I think we need. If I'm looking for the perfect board or commission member, even on the planning board, I'm looking for a smart, interested, involved citizen who who wants to serve their community. And I think that's what quality part of it. So we want to.
And I think everybody, I don't care particularly this board, I don't think everybody's got an action drive. But I think everybody comes on board with preconceived ideas about planning condition because it is that important. Where I'm not having been on council all these years, I don't know that I want to be on the planning commission, but you guys really get it first and foremost. And a lot of the, a lot of the problems that would come to us don't come to us because of the way you handled it. At planning commission level, I would like to see more. Interaction between council and the planning commission, all boards, but particularly the planning commissions. And if there's an issue that comes up, I wouldn't be opposed at all to having a, you know, a call meeting where we can sit down, open to the public. And and spoke some things over because sometimes. I know I went before the county one time to get something done and they were in lockstep with what the staff said, the planning board said, and then the county commissioner said. And that's not the way it is always with the city. There've been a number of times where the staff would either go for something and the planning commission wouldn't and we'd go for the plant, the staff would. Thumbs up, planning commission thumbs up, we'd thumbs down and vice versa. So sometimes I think when, when those issues come up, you probably need to have a conversation, you know. You know, because we want, I don't, I've watched the meetings just like Luke does, but. I'd like to see more interaction between the two bodies. I think it's that important. And we're getting, I mean, we're already growing like crazy. There's going to be more coming down the bike and we just need to all be kind of on the same page. Not to take away your autonomy, but to at least know that we're all kind of seeing things. Kind of together. That didn't make a lot of sense the way it sounded to me, campings or census to you, but I think you get my idea that I think we need to be. Have a closer relationship than we do.
May I say that, if I may? Yeah. A couple of things just to mention on that topic. One, I would say. My history of volunteering is 20 years now of ad hoc committees and advisory roles, but never taken the. League to elected official and have no intention of doing that. So thank you guys and ladies for putting yourselves out there in that capacity. That's a whole, that's next level. Two, it's nice to hear that some of the council members do watch the videos because it's always curious. So much is discussed down these rabbit holes on these technical views for a certain. Multi-hour, single agenda item. And I always wonder, do you, do you have questions? But if you've seen the footage, then you kind of, that answers the question. But you've already seen kind of our comments, but I would hope that following up on Mr. Ivanbark's, you mentioned a level of communication, you know. I always thought if you ever wanted to. I don't want to call you or one of the council members. You guys are, and ladies, you're super busy, but if you ever had a question, just our, you know, cell phone, just give us a call like. Why did you go a certain way? Why were you so on the fence about this? Why did you vote no? And we're. Constantly in debate, very respectful debate and and it may be 50 50. Half of our commission says. Yay, half of us may say no. And it's like, why were you thinking that way? So if you, just saying, the phones open if anyone ever wanted to call and have a deeper discussion on this singular topic. Two, haven't spent so much time in advisory and ad hoc roles. This is arguably the. Best working group of citizens I've ever had the privilege to serve with. And I think the city council does a fantastic job of. Plugging holes where holes need to be plugged. Say, for example, an engineer rolls off, an engineer comes on. They're not an engineer. Architect rolls off, architect comes on, attorney. I mean, these disciplines are so specialized. You really need them. On your think tank. And it's just, it's a real pleasure to serve. And again, we, we, we debate and and go back and forth and. The last thing I would say. On. Communication and. Oh, so for me, my personal experience as one of your planning commissioners, and my background was not in the city of Wilmington, even on board and raise here, I was from Riceville Beach, which is a completely different municipality. And operating system, night and day. It was a very steep learning curve for me. I mean, I almost waved the white flag at first. It was, it was so simple. And I had 20 years of service backing me up in different roles. I mean, tourist development, marketing. Planning commissions in other towns, but. As an average, ordinary citizen, it's not the easiest thing to jump on this commission. It just truly isn't. It's, it's very steep. And I've had to really challenge myself to get educated. So that's, that's the three things I want to mention.
As a relatively quiet member of the planning commission. I think to echo everything that's been said, to me, the reason for. Open communication is we are advisory and and we, that constantly comes up in our meetings. And we're advisory on a document that while we played a part in helping construct. We don't ultimately have the final say. The city council does as they should. So the way I look at it, I can only speak for myself, is. I'm looking at that book that J C has. And this is the mission that the city government has put into place and that we're to follow. And so when we looked at projects, it's really our first attempt in advisory capacity to interpret that document. You guys ultimately have the, and ladies have the ultimate say on that. So the more we know and understand sort of what the thought process is, and that's happened before. Many of you have, have put. Proposed text amendments forward on the L D C and. And staff does routinely because, you know, it's a living, breathing document. So to me, it's all the more important to understand. Pardon the. Common phrase, but sort of where your heads at vis a vis the L D C, because it makes it a lot easier for us. When we're looking at specific projects.
I would, I would just like to add to what Ace said. I, I really like that, you know. Give me a call. I just, I just pulled up the city of Wilmington's planning commission page and. Your numbers are not on there, your email addresses are not on there. And so I would just ask all of you who would. Like to take me up on that offer of calling you, please send me an email or send me a text. My number is on the website. And my email is on the website. And just send that to me and then I'll have it and be able to call you. So thanks for that suggestion.
Are your numbers not on there intentionally?
Yeah, correct. They're not public officials. We're, we're elected public officials. They're appointed to advisory capacity. So I would argue that your number shouldn't be on there.
The public finds us though.
Yeah, it's interesting because the, you know, real time experience with that, yeah, it's, it's in Clifford, it's intentional that they're not on there for a reason. Nonetheless, I found myself bound after last Tuesday's council meeting. I think some of you, as you walked out, saw me talking to the, to the three ladies and. That ended up being about a 45 minute conversation. Glad to do it, but I would not want. I think you're right, Luke. We're not elected officials and therefore we're not. We're not obligated to do that, but I think. I know when I joined the board, it just never occurred to me, the commission, it never occurred to me. That there would be a restriction that says I couldn't pick a phone up and say, you know, Charlie, why, why the council do this or so let, I don't understand this. And it just, so that's been my method of operation. Who told me what?
Who told you you couldn't go in?
Oh, nobody did. It just, but it just never occurred to me that there would be a restriction. I mean, it just never entered my mind. I just. When I joined, it just occurred to me that this had to be such a two-way street. Between, you know, even when I was on board of adjustment, same thing. It's like. It helps me personally to do this job if I understand what you guys are thinking. And why? And I, and I know in the agenda, we'll get into a couple of things, questions I want to ask you later, but. I, I think that that helps. And I think Ace made a great point is. If you know what we're thinking or why, if I dissented on something and you want to know why, I mean, that's, we should have that two-way conversation and. You know, anybody doesn't have my email and that needs it, I'll, you know, I'll get it to you. I mean, most, most of you have it, but, or phone number, but. Yeah, it should be two-way. You can't be successful without it.
I'm going to back, kind of piggyback on what Slat said about the public awareness messaging later, but. I wish people knew they didn't have to, they could weigh in any public hearing. They don't have to wait until something in their backyard that they hate. I've opened, I don't know how many public hearings and bits in six, over six years of public hearings. And most of the time, there's zero people there. The only people usually found there are upset about what is being built next to them. So there's, you know, plenty of exceptions, advocacy groups, but I wish that everybody knew they could come. And I wish everybody was as interested to in their city government and how planning. Works before they're upset about something.
J C, let me, let me pick on your experience because that's a great point. I mean, we. We normally in our meetings, we, you know, we jump right to the topic and get moving, right? And I'm not sure that we would want to have a. Five-minute signup period like, you know, the, the council has because I'm sure there's certain topics there probably. That keep coming up, keep coming up, keep coming up when people, but I'm wondering how we fulfill that. And it's probably bullet seven, that continuing education using our meeting agendas as a planning commission to help that because in that. Forty-some-odd minute conversation I have with these three ladies, there were a lot of. Misconceptions, a lot of misinformation, and I hope I did my best to clear it up for them, but I know I probably didn't, but it's just if there are. Microcosm of what's out there. How do we keep continually? Helping the public. So I, I think you're on a good point. Is there a way to? Use our meetings, carve maybe 10, 15 minutes of some type of a education or something. And, you know, we can't, not going to solve it here, but.
Could not maybe do that five to 10 minutes of. Misconception and just. Here's some things that maybe somebody may be thinking that's a misconception and rather than having. You know, people just come up and go it out. Maybe something you're hearing is a great find.
Good.
I have a whole PowerPoint.
Well, the council member, I personally feel that that may not be in the charge as prescriptive as I'm writing, but that some of our role is to. Help educate the public. I know we'll get down there, but, but. Trying to get folks that are kind of upset about some change that may be happening in their neck of the woods before they get to your level. We've hopefully addressed some of those concerns. I mean, you can't, you can explain things, but you can't understand it for people. So it's, it's tough. You know, like I said, it is a steep learning curve. Wilmington's got a big body of work. That it stands on and it's, it's, one thing that, Mr. Mayor. Under this section of replacing members and this being a really, really strong group of people from a think tank perspective, but. As our chair lady resigns based on term limits, you know. That workforce, affordable housing component piece, someone an advocate. You know, for that segment of Wilmington, that segment of development, you know, we, we hope that, you know, someone will. Like an engineer, an architect, attorney gets rolled off, you keep replacing, you keep someone like that on the commission.
Well, you're, you're being first supported for a four mile house.
Well, I think J C, your background, your passion is a little more in that space. Is that?
That's interesting. That's interesting concept.
When, over the six years I've been on, I've seen it evolved to where everybody on the planning mission is pretty much affordable housing advocate now.
But you have educated, I mean, but for me coming in blind, I didn't under, I mean, I, I hate to say I didn't quite understand. What was really, what Wilmington was facing as these, these large level problems. What their council. Right.
Three thousand and eight, the financial crisis, it changed the whole ball and you go all the way back to that. That's why every city in America. That's so metropolitan areas dealing with four miles. You hear it in every convention, Republican, Democratic, they're talking about a four mile house. And that's because of the financial meltdown that we had for our house. It changed the whole concept. So now you got Wall Street in there.
Yeah.
And they're playing heavy with it. I don't think there's any stories being told about that.
Yeah.
But then we're trying to put money into it. We're supporting it in taxation. To pay for this, to help support it. And, you know, then you run against the niggas. I don't want in their backyard.
Yeah.
So is anyone take the courage of council to say, we're going to stand up for affordable housing? We're not. And so when it comes to your backyard. You know, those neighbors buck up.
And the lines are so, so muted between affordable housing and workforce housing, which is equally as important and. Locally in that.
Right.
So ones, I mean, and they're totally different animals.
Yeah. And I mean, again, coming in as a green commissioner. I hate to say some of these concerns and issues that cities face, I just was not aware of it. And that's part of the learning curve as you come in. If you're not working in this space. You just have to figure it out and understand. This has really helped me to, I guess, kind of going into council philosophy here and. Some of those thoughts, you know.
We've been very supportive of affordable housing. You can look at it through our, through our budget. You can see the money we're sending aside for. It's serious. Every council member has been serious about it. But then it runs into the situation where you run into neighborhoods that don't want in their backyard and they can't tell you why. They can tell.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir, go ahead, Mr. Spears.
I just want to chime in again with, well, not again for the first time, but again, as it relates to affordable housing. And the definition of affordable housing, because I, I heard Charlie say that. There's a fine line between affordable housing and workforce housing, but that's, that's not true. Affordable housing is the broad umbrella. For what we as citizens, no matter what tax bracket we in. What we can afford. And there's a difference between low income housing and workforce housing. And, and that's where the line has been drawn. And that's where you get a lot of people, as you stated, who don't want that. In their backyards. And, and we saw that from the. The last city council meeting, or maybe it was the meeting before, maybe it was the last city council meeting. Where, you know, that community did not, they weren't opposed. To development. But it's the certain type of development that they wanted and it was the fear of affordable house. But again, the, the term has just been. It's overtaken. It is taking on a negative connotation. Because when you say affordable housing, people are thinking, oh, my God. Here come the poor people. They're going to come in, here come the subsidies and, and, and we have to thwart that. We don't want that in our community. But that's not what it is.
Kevin. Did you, did you mean the, the development and independence and a Leander?
Yeah, that's what I was talking.
Yeah, that didn't have anything to do with affordable housing.
I know it. I know it. I know it didn't. I didn't say that it had anything. I said. When I, I said neighbors just said that they didn't want the development, but it's the fear of affordable housing.
I was just going to say, I think, two things, the. There was a case a couple of years ago on Middle Sound Loop Road where. The developer voluntarily annexed into the city. And the room was filled with green T-shirts and Middle Sound Loop Road was. Covered with green signs. Because the developer was going to put a section eight property across from the grocery store. And it was an elderly tax credit deal. And they were voluntarily annexing because the city could participate. I mean, y'all are aware of that. My point to that is, you know, I get accused a lot of times of asking leading questions. What I'm trying to do is to educate the public as to part of the process. And so, you know, if you say T I A. Seventy-five percent of the city has no idea what that means. If you say stormwater, they have no idea of what's required. If you say density, they think subsidized housing instantly. I mean, part of the argument in that particular case was the number of apartments around that have been built in two mile radius. And my exact words were, who cares? I mean, those people live here. They have jobs. They pay taxes. And so I think it's really a public education process that would make it easier for all of us.
I'm probably the newest guy to move to Wilmington. Okay, so. Every day I learn the, the history of Wilmington and I learn that things that are important to people and things that aren't important. I'm a numbers guy. I'm a, I'm data driven and facts are facts. The things that would help me as an example on this topic. Okay, that I would look for help from the, not only the, the city council from their perspective, but from the, the professional staff as well is. You know, we, we had a, a planning session as, as a planning commission back in April and it was on housing and whatever. And I've learned, what I have learned very acutely is that we use terms, the collective, we, we use terms like. Affordable housing, housing affordability, low income housing, workforce housing, et cetera, et cetera. We tend to use those interchangeably. And I think we confuse the public a little bit is one man's opinion. Okay? And I find it hard for me to. Accurately delineate between the, the different headings. Okay? Second thing is, you know, we've, we've, a couple of studies have been done. All right. And Rachel, I'm not going to pay fun, you have nothing personal here. But the studies have shown me that there are, especially the, the 2022 revision of the, of the study. And there's a page in there and it, it talks about, here's where the deficits are. And by certain date, here's what the deficit is going to be. I did some math. Brian helped me do some math. And from that point, the beginning of January 2022. Till when I was asking the question, which was earlier this summer. The planning commission had approved probably in excess of 5,000 new doors. All right. So with the denominator of 12, 13,000. You know, deficit in, in Wilmington. I, I'd like to think those 5,000 new doors are going to at some point help alleviate.
Hang on one second, Chuck.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, guys, I just wanna check on everybody, make sure everybody was okay. Is there a fire? If you guys need anything.
So, you know, where I look for help that says is, you know, with with the work that the commission is doing, with the. The the projects that we approve and whatever, are we making a dent, or are we, you know, overmaking a dent in one bucket? And and slowly or or sorely ignoring other buckets. So for me, as as I look at what we do as a commission. That's information that would be helpful to me. And as, you know, Clifford, as you talked about. As as we kind of, you know, i- i- in our role is, you know, we're out there in the public as well and educate or is our role as. You know, formal commission meetings, you know, used to, you know, in our discussions, you know, when we talk about these things. I mean, I think that kind of information would be helpful. I think even even a, you know, a ten minute update. Uh, we only meet once a month, so maybe maybe we need to tweak our agenda a little bit, but I think that's. Extremely extremely helpful information to keep getting out there in the public. Eye and there's, I think there's a role that the planning commission can play in that that would help move that move that ball forward a little bit.
So, one other thing that I haven't heard anyone talk a lot about yet, um that I think is an important role for us. And we we've talked a lot about quantification of things, density, numbers of doors. I mean, I think our group also looks at the qualitative aspects of how that book, the land development code gets. Implemented because um sometimes just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do it in that way. So I think that our board has an important role to look at. Beneficial ways from, you know, all kinds of things, urban principles, sound um planning. You know, things that are appropriate for how and where they get designed and and developed. As opposed to just the quantitative thing, because there are two ways that I think we need to look at it because. Sometimes, just because you can figure out how to make a site work as a rezoning thing, doesn't mean it's the right way to do it. So. I do think that there, I I tell, I tell this a lot of times, that design matters, right? So that qualitative aspect of what we do and how we look at things, I think is an important thing for people to be aware of.
He says that a lot.
These two are, it's appr- appropriate, they're sitting next to one another. That's why this board convention is extremely balanced.
And that brings up a good um example of what's important about technical skills, because if if um we didn't have an architect, I look to you a lot. To talk about some of those design matter issues, but if we didn't have you, it'd all be like, well, I like that, well, I don't like that, you know, it's just the opinions about. Where people's experience, personal experiences are, so um I appreciate your um technical skills.
You know, you all were charged to adhere to this. I mean, that's, you you do have your opinions. Obviously, I like this, I don't like that, but ultimately, this is what we've given you, and that's kind of your value. When it gets to us, politics creeps in, you know, it's just, I mean, it's on board.
Yeah.
Uh, as much as I'd like to think that we, if we don't, I know it it I I build it. You know, you've uh you you you're, I I I I used to, years ago, I looked out at the sea of orange shirts or green shirts and. That really hit home and I'm thinking, damn, I'm representing a hundred twenty-five thousand, not fifty-five sitting out with shirts. And and then we were talking earlier about people, you know, having a lot of passion about their issue. And the thing that gets me, they'll be down there and I mean, they're they're citizens and they're exercising their rights and once their issues are valid, they're gone. And there's something right behind it that equally is important, they could care less. All they're caring about what's going on in their little world. So. I don't know, I mean, I I you're right, coming on the board like that, that that's that's a learning curve, having to learn to try to adhere to that. And then be able to put your, because we want your opinions, that's why, I mean, your talents, that's why you're on there. But ultimately, y'all are are more uh pigeonholed than we are. I don't know if that's the right way to put it, but.
Specialized.
That's, yeah, pretty accurate.
And I think we do a good job of explaining why we give a reason for it, um which is that education of the public side of it, but. You know, they don't always, they don't always like it. It's like John mentioned, the T I A and other acronyms that are that are used. Uh, we explain it as well as we can, and then they all look at us and say, well, you already had it, you you decided before you got there. And it's, you know, it's not, we we've got to follow, we do have to follow the books, and we are bound by those rules. All the short of it, we have opinions, we all use them, Danny tells us how everything looks, and we all believe him because we can't express it. He can tell us what we're thinking in terms of uh the why we don't like, you know, particularly. Uh, you know, I can talk about stormwater or traffic, John can talk about a lot of development issues. We all have our own piece of that pie and we all talk about it. And then it becomes how do we relate that into the code so that hopefully someone understands, doesn't mean they do, but hopefully they.
Yeah.
I I like the orange shirts, I like the green shirts, I like when the public comes, I hate the meetings when there's no one in front of you, because then there's nobody interested in what's going on.
Charlie, I think there's two things. There's the land development code, yeah, that's pretty black and white, that's it's pretty non-negotiable, it is what it is. I think where there's a level of subjectivity is in the comprehensive plan, and I think that's where. You know, I I find us getting into very healthy discussions about, you know, how that fits into the comprehensive plan, given the specific application. So I think the comprehensive plan is a little bit more subjective and a little little subjective interpretation from time to time. That's pretty black and white, yeah.
Yeah, but I think it was done first, who we're looking at, the development code, give a little bit more detail, but we wanted to move ability forward. I mean, I say trees, because trees is part of the land development code, the citizens said, they wanted us to reflect more of, which we did, you know. They wanted to have more walkability, right? They wanted to have more services placed where people live. All that is met in this thing. I I wanna make sure that everybody understands, this wasn't created by city council. This was created by the citizens of this community over three years, over two thousand people are part of this process. It was a pretty deliberate process that we went through. We debated it, y'all debated it, y'all looked at it, we looked at it, we went over it, over and over this thing. It was even at the at the last moment, people said, y'all shouldn't have passed it at all. But we gave the objectivity. So that we can have some creativity in regards to development plans to make development look better, not like it was standardized years ago. And remember, this land development code, the last time we did was nineteen eighty-four, think about that. You know, the way the way people lived and the way people developed property in those days is night and day compared to what it is today. People don't want the bigger yards, they want smaller uh pieces of property to to be able to to put houses off, the way people live are different. Um, the the average homesite, the home, average person in our home today is one and a half, five hundred come to that, but it's one person. So more one bedroom units opposed to three bedroom units, all of this has changed and it's a living document, and that's where it was supposed to be created. But I I I, you know, I applaud you folks for staying as close to this thing as possible, taking care of stormwater, big issue in our community, pollution. I hear that all the time, trees, look out there. Our city is not a densely built place with high buildings. It is, we're built in a forest, literally. And I think the passion for that and what we've done there has been been incredible. And so I applaud you guys for everything y'all did to think through these processes, because they're not easy. I'm looking for good looking development when it happens. And remember, the city won't, there's only grown at one point two percent, that the perception is that we have exploded, we have exploded. The region has exploded, look at the traffic over those bridges, look at it coming in, and a lot of your portable housing is going over the grocery counter and the dinner counter. The land availability is not here, but what is here and what is left is gonna be extremely valuable. And we know that the larger tracks are, not that many, but most of the stuff that we have today is infill development. And I hate to say this about infill development, but it sounds like a knife fight, because those people that have had woods in their backyard for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. Wanted it there, where they want the city to pay for it. And that's not gonna happen. It's, I mean, we can't sit around here and raise taxes to pay buy land just instead of the salary. We 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 also have a duty. To try to put housing, middle type housing, affordable housing uh in in placement, we can do it right. And I appreciate you folks looking at those things, because they are extremely, extremely important to all of us and what the city looks like in the future.
But, yeah, anyway, I hear that in, to me, the issue, it's not an issue, it's a fact. Through L D C and everywhere else, there's a word compatibility, and that's what's coming at us from these infill. You know, it's just, it's not the technical, it's this, that, it's that word of compatibility. And I'm sympathetic to the the green shirts and the blue shirts in my own neighborhood, whatever it may be, but I understand we got to deal with it, they got to deal with it. But it's just that issue of compatibility, and that's not really addressed, that's a subjective issue, true.
But it's real.
It's real, it's real.
That that's the passion of.
Compatibility, that interconnection, those two things can get more people mad, and it can actually probably be more than anything.
And you see what happened on Greenville Loop Road over many, many years, when we had an opportunity to connect the old end of the drive, we did. And you have one road from Pine Road to Old End Drive, one way in and one way out. And you got all this traffic, and everybody says, what are you gonna do about it? Well, you didn't want the interconnectivity, all the state puts blocked it, and it became, it 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 organized, and that's a great example. Of when you don't connect with other neighborhoods, this is what happens. I remember when I put it down on council, we didn't want any connectivity to be fair. They wanted to go out on Eastwood Road, go up Eastwood Road, make a left at military cut off to get there. That's right. And we had to fight a battle to open that up, guess who uses that? But sometimes the public doesn't understand that, and I'm sympathetic to the public, but that's why I'm looking at experts. Planning staff, our engineering staff, traffic engineering, to give me that information necessary. I I don't learn, so I have to look at them for their expertise. But that's one example, two examples, that can show you where we made some pretty significant mistakes. Long term, that we should have connectivity that we didn't get, and it created, has created a traffic issue on Reebok Loop Road, but it's it's horrendous.
Even with commercial college road, I mean, you've got some shopping centers and now you can finally line your way to the next one. And the next one, without having to go sit at a stoplight and get back on College Road and make a left turn, two blocks down the road. So it's interconnectivity, it's it's, to me, it's the smartest thing that you can do for traffic control is interconnectivity. And people don't abuse it. I mean, you're always gonna have that ten percent does, but it's not abuse, it's like what you're talking about.
Yes, sir. Touch on that, the point Mayor made, that that. A lot of people think City Wilmington is growing in a rapid pace, but one point two percent and.
What's the average rate for the last ten years?
Nothing, it's nothing, but the the rest of it is exploding. So what we have is adaptive reuse and infill development. And we have a very new land development code, so my personal opinion that the most important thing everybody in this room. Does with with regard to planning is the consistent iteration of that plan. I think we've done a pretty good job of staff has quarterly quarterly cleanups that we that we get, and uh and we and council can bring up others as we hear them. But I think that's where we really need to have communication from the planning, planning commission to the. The city staff and and also to the councils, how to iterate this this land development code to keep iterating it and and tighten it up in places that we need. Because it is the first one that was done since then. So there's gonna be some holes, there's gonna be some gaps, there's gonna be some headbutting that's gonna go on. Uh, as we come across these infill developments, that adaptive reuse projects that are important. Uh, but it's really all we're gonna be seeing uh. For forever, I mean, what, there's no other massive projects that are coming. So um I I would just charge everybody around this table, take serious considerations, as I know you all do, when when the uh. The cleanups are coming and how to educate ourselves, bring proper changes forward as we continue to iterate this this important plan.
You know, one of the 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 big entities in the community that probably needs up more housing than any other, there's nothing to talk about. And it's probably the biggest growth in our community. And we've got enough students in the university, because I've heard talk of some of the folks out there, that are commuting literally from Jacksonville, Hampstead and other areas. Because they can't find a house. So the university has an issue there is to, they were twenty-two percent, they moved up their. Their storms to about forty percent, increased the the enrollment, it's now going back down a little bit. So that's gonna continue to be an issue, because if the goal of the university is to get to twenty-some thousand, which is right around the corner now. You you can think about a thousand extra kids or two thousand extra kid or three thousand extra kids. And then you look at the land availability that's left here in the city, in the fifty-two square miles that we represent, there's not that much. So there's gonna be one or two things that are happening, either there's gonna be more pressure, or more neighborhoods around there to buy more housing, convert that housing to college stuff. Or university guys can put more units onto their campus to help take care of some of that growth. Because that's your biggest growth in the city, is the university going to throw a flood, because you got twenty thousand people right now, smack dab in the middle. And as they grow a thousand or two thousand, four thousand, where is that population going? And so you gotta start looking like that. That's why a lot of these apartments have all been taken around there. And people say to me, departments, departments. Look at your growth rates, who is actually driving that growth? It's not being subdivisions, I mean, the biggest one in the city of Wilmington right now is River Lights, and that's about to come to an end. In regards to development side. So it's it's from within, where is it going? And you gotta look at those those patterns, and that's a a hook that our staff is also taking into consideration. That, also the hospital, the seven thousand people, I've heard from Bernie Moon Bay and all those, that, you know, nurses. Being able to have more uh the population, more the employment base plus where they work is extremely important to them too. And then throwing all the other pressures of people that are looking here for different jobs and what have you, and you got a pretty, pretty significant issue that that we're gonna be dealing with. And I hope that we have better discussions with some of our partners out there, because I think we really need to.
The college population also eats up all, not all, but eats up a great deal of the same family residences. About a mile, mile and a half with that campus, it goes after after a mile, you get a parking permit inside the mile you can. So, I mean, I I live out in that neighborhood, and it's just, make, some developers have come along and built, bought the house, gutted it. Uh, and made it for it, they got, they rented by the room, and they do a good job. But some of them look like post-war Berlin, and it's just the way some of them choose to conduct themselves. But uh it impacts the neighborhoods, and the other thing that we have to deal with that come in front of y'all. We have a lot of unengineered neighborhoods that we annexed, uh and and some of them.
Uh, in a stormwater at all?
None, they just, they. Rented neighborhoods started selling lots, and I mean, just just this morning, the folks in Baum Creek, that place was flooding before, they got annexed. But they got, they showed pictures of ditches that be to be cleared out. I mean, that's that's a huge ticket, and it's not just that, I mean, it's all over, high and low. They put ditches back there and nobody owns the ditches, so it's it's just, that's, it's. I wish y'all did get it.
This is extremely beneficial to me, not to speak for everyone else, but just to hear your philosophy, what's what's your thinking? And one thing you said, Mr. Mayor, that's really resonated with me is a city in the trees, because I've always kind of struggled, where's our height? We're a two-story town, a four-story town. Pick all these guys with DC, nothing's above the Capitol Building, I just kinda like that, but hearing that was just really positive and. Um, kinda gives me a little bit more, you know, as a vetting committee, I feel like, you know, vetting the applicant. Dress right, I not to downplay the process, but to make everyone in the room a little more comfortable, I'll say this is a dress rehearsal. The big show is when you get in front of the council members, so get your angst out, get your pitch right. Get you educated, try to, you know, make it a little more efficient, use some time for council, but. Um, city in the trees, that's that's really, and then that's the philosophical component, you know, in some regards, you. Then you bring like council member Spears up there in the cloud, um, you know, the practical component of it is. What is affordable housing? It's what's affordable to you and your income. You know, well, that, it's like, okay, well, that's simple enough, but you could really try to make that more complicated than it is. Um, you know, but again, it's part of learning on the on the job training for one of your current, your rookie planning commission members. Understanding these concepts.
I I have a question about the city council philosophy on growth, and um I was in California last week and. In a city where it took us an hour and fifteen minutes to go twenty miles. And I was surprised, it'd been a long time since I've been there, but there are very few high rises. There's really very few five-story buildings. It's really two, maybe three-story buildings as far as you can see.
We're talking about here.
In Los Angeles.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so I guess my question is, you know, we hear a lot about concerns about height. We hear a lot of concerns about traffic. Um, we hear a lot of concerns about too many gas stations, too many car washes. You know, to the latter, my comment is always, well, they're not building it to lose money.
Right.
They're building it because people need it and they've done the studies. What what is your all's philosophy on height, for example? Best example I can come up with is the I fly facility on Eastwood Road. Which um at the time, we approved or recommended approval, people were not happy because it was sixty some odd feet tall. Well, now, when you look at it, it's really gonna be pretty cool.
It's not as tall as the trees.
No, because it it actually is, and I think you pointed this out, you were not on the planning commission at the time. That it was actually that that height started below grade the way the topography worked. Um, but what is everybody's thought on that? Because, you know, we with limited grant space. Um but what is everybody's thought on that? Because, you know, we with limited grant space, we can't. Can't fill it out.
I think the code, the way that it's been developed, gives us the autonomy to be able to put some height in certain areas, not all areas.
Right.
In specific areas where it would be conducive, as Danny said, it kind of integrated, Ron said, the the neighborhood community. They give in certain specific spots where I think the planning staff has looked at, I think. They have identified some areas that that we go with some height, but obviously height is not in our cause. Like, you're not gonna be here with twenty-story buildings, ten-story, fifteen-story. But I can see seven stories. I think you'll see demands for five and seven, because you know, seven is, then once you get over seven, I think the fire cut changes and it. Of course, becomes a lot more expensive. But I do think in the future, it will be that you will see more demand height. Um the issue comes back there is how the neighborhood is gonna be active. And then, you know, Charlie's always said this to me, the more density you put vertically. You save more on the ground side, you save more trees, you save more vegetation, it's better for the environment. But then on the on the flip side of that, people say, we already block the sun. So, you know, I I think it, I think in certain areas, height is okay. And then I think in other areas, no, I wouldn't touch it. It just, it's it's gonna, it's gonna be a whole problem.
Major George or Earth Room area.
Yeah, I think with high with high traffic locations, you have sixty-seven thousand bars and, you know, seventy-five thousand or whatever, I could see that. But uh when it's really a buddy in that neighborhood, it's where it's where you really get, let's say, for example, but take Independence Boulevard. You got the mall on one side, you got the woods on the other side, you go down, you walk toward that shit yard. I can see height on the mall side, can't see on the other side.
Absolutely.
And I agree with that. The ones across the street are gonna spring, but Sean's blocking on the. Sure, well, I mean, you have a lot more setback there and you can do something because every redevelopment, I think, you know, that the Kmart side. Is another side that at some point time will be redeveloped. I know that we did one with the old Stevenson's hot dog.
I'm sure they're celebrating their third birthday out there.
There's a lot of people that we have supported in the years that have not even gotten out on the ground. Right, three major, so they don't, but uh, you know, will we like, will we allow some height to take place, but not not a lot.
I I I like to see, you know, like where you've got a tight uh a tight lot. And and have have some parking incorporated in your, if you're gonna go up five, seven stories. Have some parking on, you know, personal level, ground level or whatever. And then go up and that that utilizes your entire lot. Because parking lots are expensive.
Kind of like Dawson and Third, or there there's a project at Dawson, I think it's Dawson and Third. Right across from Burger King where they.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and there's parking, I think there's two levels of.
Two or something.
Two, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those those, they don't feel too tall and you're right, the height's gotta be in the right location. Uh but at the same time, we all have to, I'm glad to hear you guys say that you will support some level of height if it's in the right places too.
This is the only area in the entire county.
That is.
So to build a four-story building.
Yes, like follow the height of the building.
I mean, we've got twenty stories here and we're we're building four-story buildings. And then we go out there community and somebody says, I want to pay attention to it.
We workshop, when we had the workshop with staff and some of the housing discussions, I can't remember um. Someone mentioned that it's something about the, you said that seven, five to seven stories is sort of the threshold where different. Buildings science comes, but something about four to five stories, there's something in there.
It's wood construction versus non-combustible construction.
What was that?
Wood construction versus non-combustible construction.
Costs just dramatically, yes, and so that's why you probably see much of a cap seven.
And that's her five, excuse, that's her five, they're like.
Right before you get elevators and other things. Time to, but again, if somebody's looking at it and they're looking at a piece of property and they can't put parking in the building and get some, get some density out of it. Because height, that that is a trap tip for most people. Uh but what they fight is it the density, the height and the traffic side. Regardless of what comes out of it, those are the things. But the other thing that we begin to see, and I think you guys are seeing it too, is that aging of the place where people may want to live, let's just say it's South Oleand. Uh as long as people's, let's say, and they may age out, they, you know, the house, everything, kids have gone. They wanna stay in the area, so they're looking for that middle house to bring that that will support that, but they don't wanna leave the area. Um and that's where they look again. And that's the other, that's the other, I think, signature pieces during the socializing special. Land hall, River Lights, those people start to age out, move out. They wanna be in those areas.
Philosophically, would you as a council say that you're in locks, you and the the county commissioners are in lockstep? Or are there noticeable differences?
I mean, there's noticeable difference, okay. In regards to density, let's just say, and I'm I'm not. Perfectly wholesome, I think their plan tries to move, tries to emulate ours a lot. I know who kind of helped design that, which is foremost, um city's plan of year. But the the problem that they have there is if they've got density, they can't build roads. Cities can build roads, they can improve roads, and developers can help us with that. They don't, and they're not gonna touch the improvement of the roadway, so if they've got a lot of density in their planning process. But they don't have a mechanism to take care of the traffic issues. And that's that's a big thing that they have to deal with that we don't have.
But you know, you just hit on a great continuing education board and that's on the ownership of the roads. And I find most of the people that, you know, as I've moved down here and and people that have moved down here, especially from the northeast. And and the subject is traffic and I can tell you in the groups I've been in, we've had, you know, the uh, you know, the um. Uh NC dot, you know, engineers, all that, you know, here's the ten-year plan, go through all that. But the biggest aha moment is what you just said. You have city roads, you have state roads, there's no end to, and everybody's moved from places where there's city roads, county roads, state roads. And you don't have that area of contention, but you also leaves that contention of who's gonna maintain it on what type of, um, you know, what they, what what timeframe.
And the other thing that we have, and I think they just incorporated some of that in the county, is our storm. Stormwater, I just don't worry about it, I just don't worry about it. You know, I still worry if the problems on the council back there.
It was eight dollars, that one, you are, you know, now they, what is it about? Who's the numbers? About twelve? Like that was, no.
It's about twelve.
Anyways, thank you a lot. But it, I mean, it goes directly to Troy, the tax or anything, or beef, so.
And it helped alleviate some of the flooding, especially some of the older subdivisions. That when they were built in the sixties and seventies.
Right.
And they sized the pipes and then you have something that's built downstream, it's taking care of a lot of the flooding issues that we were seeing all over the community. And we're systematically going through there, taking care of it. I think when they first did the evaluations, about what, a hundred and fifty, sixty million dollars.
No, no, we are a company called Big Bunny Repetition Shroud, I don't know why. They were out of Kansas. And uh they came in and did about a six, eight month estimation. And it was three hundred seventy-seven million dollars worth of storm when we were spending five million dollars a year on stormwater. I mean, that's how we could ever see today like.
Yeah, we did the math last, after way.
That's exactly right. And so we did incorporate the planning, I'll tell you what, you go off of uh Oleander Drive off Fifty-second, Fifty-four. Clearbrook and all that, we have created uh wetlands, uh we make some great strides, people aren't having to put their damn houses up on stilts. Uh so it 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 that's one that that really worked and the county for forever today wouldn't do that. Uh I would give anything in the world if they required developers all these years with sidewalks in front of their development. Think about that, Market Street, all these places would have sidewalk, good developers are doing that. But it wasn't ever required and you you look at all of our stuff, we got sidewalks every bird, we put in Paul City Trails, so. Yeah, I I I just think we're more, well, we're more urban, but hell. Kevin O'Grady used to say it better than anybody, we got a city on the north side of our city and another city on the south side of our city. Because we can't annex and that's that's a shame, because if we hadn't had an, Bill, you always say this, if we hadn't annexed. Two that we did in ninety-five and ninety-eight, City Wilmington would be in dire straits. Because I mean, we provide a lot of services for those folks that don't, that don't participate. And the roads, Jack, I said, no, we get pile bill money, but it doesn't, doesn't carry the day. But we do get that pile bill money and uh and Bill and Luke are on the NPO, they tell you that they're self-on the way with some of our major. Gridlocked intersections and it'll happen hopefully in my lifetime. But that's one, that's one, I mean, and and when it does, it's gonna make a difference. Uh there won't be so many, you know, it's gonna help traffic um. Go, I I have to go to Leland once a month on a Monday morning to an eight o'clock meeting. And it's absolutely amazing to see the traffic is backed up all way beyond Brunswick Forest. I'm talking about like this, nothing's moving, coming into Wilmington every morning. And it's like that way coming south on Seventeen from Oslo County, Hampstead, and it's like that coming in a high forty, it's like that coming in a four twenty-one. And people raise hell at us, what are you gonna do about all the credit? What are you doing? You know, so.
You know what they call that on Long Island?
Who's that?
The trade parade.
And they're not tourists, you know, these people are coming to work, they're coming to shop, they're coming to get medical treatment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where the straw that stirs the shake and Leland's doing, Brunswick, Northern Brunswick County is is is, boy, they're making great strides. I mean, a lot of times, a lot of those people that were coming here could stay there and and that doesn't hurt my feelings.
Uh on on that note, if I may, I think one of the things that oftentimes is, has to be drawn out in. When we're reviewing something or having a hearing, is the fact that the developer, maybe in conjunction with the city, maybe in conjunction with DOT or maybe on their own. Is having to make improvements, transportation improvements related to their project. So the best example of that I can think of was um. Summer Walk, the Greenville Loop and Oleander. And and there's a lot of angst about that, but if if you go back and watch the tapes, you know, their attorney said multiple times. This is not gonna happen until this happens. And so those improvements will be made to that intersection, um and I think that gets lost sometimes in the in public's perception. Um and the same is true of Stormwater, because yes, there's a problem there right now, but understand, nothing's being treated. On whatever that infill site is, but it's gonna have to be, depending on how big it is. Um the the other. Struggle whether or not to bring this up, but the other thing that that is huge. The projects that are related to the parks and transportation bonds. Um getting those done would alleviate, I think personally, a huge amount of public angst. To have those walkways, to have that traffic circle at Pine Grove and Greenville Loop. Um it to to get independence and um river road down. I think, I know that's a separate from those, but um you know, the reason I promote those is not. For any other reason, that it would just mitigate a lot of people's angst if they can ride their bike down Greenville Loop without.
Well, I tell you what, I make proposals to the staff, anybody that listens to me. Uh you're on, we have an ad hoc meeting on transportation, we meet about every two months. I will, I you're, I I hope I have the authority to do it, you're all invited to come and sit with us on that meeting. Just I to see what the the roadblocks are, not not so much roadblocks. But the the bumps in the road toward getting those projects to completion is very real. We probably get as ma, I I probably get as many calls about that as anything else out there. And I'm sure everybody else does, when you're gonna finish it, when you're gonna finish it. And we don't always do a tap, we we it's not a tap dance when we talk about doing, but it's very real, the problems that we run into. With right away, people on Greenwood Road screaming for it and the damn John would go out there and they won't give us a.
Ease back.
Construction easement or 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 have to go to court and damn, we got. The next two lawyers over there in Meredith's office doing nothing but that. And we can't let a contract, we can't do an R and P to all the houses and other things, bros, and that's the gospel.
But that easement acquisition piece is, it is the, is clogging, it was clogging the pipe. And we we did invest in some, in some more attorneys that like literally, that's that's their whole task is is. Condemning when we have to, but go with the easement acquisition process and by and large, we're rolling. Um I think, I think we'll, the the community will see the fruits of that labor in the in the near future as they are already. I mean, we're we're rolling on a couple.
We're sure close, right there.
That that would be um. I said on this agenda, you know, the continuing education piece for some, some of our commission members that. Aren't doing this every day for a living in the space that. And haven't got the knowledge and history that the council members have, I mean, uh, you know, just to. To either take it, educate yourself as a as a citizen of Wilmington. And and, you know, or take it on blind faith, because Charlie said so. I just believe in Charlie so much, but you know, for us, it's like, well, we got the public there. Yeah, they're they're upset about some things that they don't understand. It's like, oh, I don't really understand it either, I gotta figure this out, you know, to help. Be an advocate, to be a black bear for what the city of Wilmington is trying to achieve, so thank you for bringing that up, I'm sure someone else will take you up on.
On the other side, when we passed that bondage in two thousand fourteen, I think Bill and I were here uh two thousand fourteen, ten years, guys. And I don't blame you. I'm, I I call Tony all the time and say, you know. Will it be this year and next year? You know, it it's it's almost inexcusable. But I'm fortunate enough for, I'm sitting on this board, so I understand why it hadn't happened. But you go out there and try to tell Harry Humming of that, and then they don't, that's not good enough. Damage for ten years, paying taxes and stuff, it it it's, I mean, every one of us has got its own unique set of. Issues and I'll tell you what, our staff is working around the clock trying to get that done, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um I don't know where we are on this agenda, but um. Yes, sir. Um I I had three things just to sort of throw out and and Sean may be able to chime in and and those of you who've watched me. I hate the road closures. But the primary reason I hate them is because the city gets nothing for it. And I understand that's a state law, but. Is the number I've seen in the whatever four and a half years I've been on the planning commission, it might be worth pursuing the legislature to change that. Because we we've closed a lot of roads in my short four and a half years. And the biggest thing I hate is that the city literally gets nothing for it. I mean, half goes to this property owner and half goes to that property owner. And that public right of way is gone, and I'm not saying it's not necessarily appropriate in that case, but I feel like the city should be compensated for that. Um in some way, and that's a, I know that's a state issue, I'm reminded of that.
You're you're right, we we, yeah, we talked about it very quickly. John's right, under state statutes, um the city cannot sell their right of way, our right of way. Um the only thing we can do is close it, which. The planning commission can recommend that if a petition is brought for read about the city or by a private citizen. Effectively, what that closure does, it goes through, splits the right of way, as John was saying, down the middle. Owner on this side gets half, the owner on on the other side gets the other half, it seemed to be a simple example. Um and John's right, we can't charge for the, the only thing. Um there was maybe a small economic impact, is that theoretically that property right of way is not taxed. So whatever it is that's closed, theoretically gonna go in some small way back off of the tax rolls, that's really the only.
See Councilman Ravenbark's earlier comment about three hundred million in stormwater at five million a year, yeah, yeah. Um and the the other thing had to do with conditional rezonings, um we had two instances that. Really exacerbated this for me. One was a a law office on College Road who simply wanted to extend his office. Further into his parking lot away from College Road. The other was a um. Repair shop, auto repair shop, who simply wanted to add, I think it was two more bays.
Yeah.
Yeah, onto his site. Well, because they were operating under a conditional zoning, they had to go through the entire process again. So they had to hire a consultant or a lawyer, go through, you know, and and I'm not. That just seemed excessive to me um in in, they probably each spent a year to do that. Um I don't know what stumbling blocks there are there, but I think those are the kinds of things that I'll look at and say. You know, for the average citizen who's trying to expand their business and impact no one, and those, by the way, those are the public hearings where there's nobody.
Well, that's a waste of, that's a waste of staff resources, it's a waste of all your time, it's basically a taxpayer who's who's funding all of this. And ultimately, the the property owner who's just trying to expand.
Yeah, but but that brings a question then, is that can we, to John's point, I think is where you're going, is. Can we, do we have the the authority within the city structure here to change that process? Or is that a process that's bound by?
Or of the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm.
But it's city ordinance.
Yeah, I'm citing the problem, not the solution.
I understand, but but, you know, to me, it comes down, there's not like. Good clarity on, again, what would be appropriate for conditional versus non-conditional rezonings. Because there are ones in certain sites that I absolutely, you know, really can't stomach sometimes a non-conditional rezoning.
A just rezoning.
Yeah, yeah, so but there are a lot of cases where it would make total sense and be more appropriate to do it, so. Maybe that's part of the land development code evolution, but I, I mean, I too. Maybe that's part of the land development code evolution, but I, I mean, I too think that. There could be a little bit better clarity around when and why um. Conditional versus general rezoning could or should be applicable. I don't know what the answer is, but.
I've seen ones since I've been on.
They're gonna usually get past us. One question I wanted to ask is, what was, what is the council's thoughts on that? Because there are places that it just makes sense that it's a straight rezoning, and it works. You know, it's not, it's not going to endanger the public health and welfare, and, and it fits in that, that particular location. Um, there are ones that absolutely should be committed, just like Danny was mentioning, we know what those are. And usually the folks coming in know that ahead of time too, they need to have it, but I don't think every rezoning needs. To have that whole process, they're just, we saw one, what, two, three months ago, I know I've been off for two months, but.
Yeah.
A few months before that, um, where the guys were talking about splitting some lots and.
Oh, yeah.
They were just, all they were doing was splitting some lots, now I don't think the two men had talked to each other and they were fighting, but that's all beside the point. It still could have been a straight rezoning plan, because all we were doing was, it didn't increase density anywhere, it just let those two guys build houses. Like we started all over for it.
Brian, have you got something?
Well, I'm just gonna mention John, actually, the commission does change, we do have the ability to go into trade modification, okay? There's some sharing parameters, obviously, we can change those parameters, you know, accommodate to the situation you're describing, we'll take it.
And the, and the bad thing is, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to write that code so specific that it only addresses that one issue. It would be something that addressed a global issue.
Right, so it's across the city, so it's, it's really difficult to kind of narrow it in, and then provide the flexibility to talk.
And that's exactly why what John just said, the other side of the coin is, you know, the next guy comes along and he's pushing the envelope. You know, but, but boy, do I agree with you wholeheartedly. I see some up there that I think, God, these guys, it's all issues, because it's, this didn't make a lot of sense.
Well, even if there's not something clarified, I mean, I think Brian and his staff. Are kind of our first tip of the spear, and you guys talk about us being the tip of the spear for you, I mean. Brian, I don't know what ability you have to, to sort of guide applicants on what you think is most applicable or most appropriate. Because there, I, I would hope that staff would have the ability to say. This makes sense for a conditional versus a, you know, a, a general rezoning, so.
We do have that flexibility, we always have this discussion, but there's really a fine line. There's an unknown impact, we want to mitigate that, so I think there's some problems, I would say, the only one thing is. That there are some places that we want to do a general, maybe there's a way to outline these bullets that like, if it also, that these kind of category. We would consider a great rezoning, and maybe consider providing a rezoning where this doesn't make sense.
The, the county has that with a straight rezoning, you can do a terms of petitions sheet, that. Kind of says, yeah, we're rezoning at the X, but we're not gonna put these uses.
Yep.
Within that, or something along those lines. Right, and then the only other thought I was having vis a vis the code change would be. You know, maybe it's within the code a way for staff to look at it, if, if I have a conditional zoning with this approved site plan. And I want to modify that site plan, maybe that's a staff exercise to go through, to, to modify the site plan versus.
It is to a certain extent, like the rails we got up in the gutter, basically, there's a certain percentage, you can't. Increase building footprints by so much, and after you change your access, can't internal circulation, it's all still out. At least that's our good, we can change where we want, but then you gotta be able to.
Right, no, understood.
Don't feel comfortable about all the help you get from staff, none of their sitting there.
Absolutely.
Was there anything else in the process that you, that you think that it could be done that can make it more efficient, more effective? I mean, you brought up one, John, is there anybody else?
I, I, I have a process question, and I'm, I hesitate to bring it up because I'm probably gonna upset council members, but I'll take a shot at it.
Take a shot.
Um. No, it's a, it, it's, it's a recent exercise that took place, and so, and, and I ask it, and I'll preface this, I'm asking because I. Really want to understand where your heads are at, so my expectations are properly set, and it's this. Um, obviously, we've had two contentious discussions about the, the independence and Oleander, um, you know, um. Application and, and whatever, um, you know, we had a, a very, very good discussion. You know, at the, at our planning commission, and you know, we took a four to one vote, you move it forward, and that, that's the way the process works. Got to you guys, you know, I sat in my, my normal, as, as Tony says, he's gonna put a plaque on the, on the chair where I sit in the back there. Here, here is my observation, the more the conversation went on, especially with the attorney, and the more. You know, I could see you guys all thinking and, and working, you know, Luke, you finally brought up, and I, Luke or Bill, one of the two, you brought up about. Moving it to a, to an M D seventeen, getting rid of the retail, so you started moving the pieces around of the puzzle around. And that was probably another hour discussion for you all, and I know you all are willing to do that, but I'm ju- I'm just thinking of efficiency, and here's the question. Would there have ever been a consideration in that particular discussion where you'd have said, wait a minute, we're moving a lot of pieces on the chessboard? And all that, we could accomplish the following, if we, if we moved it back to the planning commission, had them relook at it. You know, and go, and go through the process another month. And when you ask the, you know, the opposition guy, you know, if he wanted to head, head responding, the applicant's attorney. It would, it would give the, the, the homeowners. One more chance to engage with the developer. So under the guise of, you always want people, they come to a meeting, they want to make sure they've been heard in some way, shape or form, I know that's, it's our goal, I know that's your goal. Would there have ever been a, an option in your mind that says, you know, yeah, I'm gonna buck this back down? For one more month, and I'm just, I'm wanting to learn how you operate, so I have my expectations.
I, I think as an elected official and leader of the city, that the buck stops with us. And it's incumbent upon us to make that decision, even if it's difficult, and, and we've got a lot of people that are upset about it.
Good.
I think that's part of being a leader. And, and changing things from the dais, as long as it's a, you know, a legal change, is something we should do, and if you're. You know, rela- if you understand the land development code in any way, shape or form, it's not that difficult to do. Um. From an affordable, I'm gonna get a little macro on you for a second, Jack, but from an affordable housing standpoint, and housing affordability that we are truly suffering with. In this city, and in all communities are, the city of Wilmington has, we have a major issue. And we can't tax our way out of it, we can't subsidize our way out of it, it, it is supply and demand. It is something I'm gonna be able to build houses for everybody, must be, that's true. But when you kick something back, and it goes another two months, three months, you got attorney's fees. You got redrawn to plans, I mean, you've got, you've got major implications that are just gonna go to the bottom line of the consumer at the end of the day. So I, that's what I'm thinking about, why I'm saying, I'm not gonna kick it back, I think we need to take leadership decisions and make decisive action. Up or down? Did it, you're done.
And I disagree, and I'm, I'm on the, the losing end of, of that discussion, as you were on the losing end of.
See, I don't consider being on the losing end, I consider just.
The not prevailing opinion, um, but you know, to me, I think that the, um. The people who came out and have spent their time on this, and, and the attorney that they hired, you know, had some right to. Um, at, when we switched horses in midstream, to be able to, uh. Evaluate how that affected their position and, and respond to it, so I think just from a, a open government and transparency viewpoint. I, I would have preferred, yes, to, to table it and give it more time, and again, for the affordable housing.
You mentioned the table there.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Uh, it was obvious that it was gonna go through.
Okay.
So, um. I think from, you know, and again, from an affordable housing standpoint, I know that, um, you know, there is some argument that. Uh, supply is certainly part of the affordable housing equation, but these were six hundred thousand dollar townhomes and three hundred and twenty thousand dollar. Uh, one bedroom condos, and so from that perspective, I didn't, you know, I didn't think there was any give on the, uh, the affordable housing.
Well, I don't think, well, I don't think he, he never marched that out.
No, no, no.
I think we may have had a lot, ideological differences, so I don't think we're gonna surprise anybody there, but. But from an affordable housing standpoint, I'm talking on the macro level, when you've got a three hundred thousand dollar one bedroom condo. That someone who's staying in an apartment, this is, this is missing middle housing, this is like one on one missing middle housing, and you got somebody who's in an apartment. They're gonna leave that apartment to own, own a piece of property, they're gonna own a condo for three hundred and twenty thousand, whatever that price ends up being. That opens up a, uh, an apartment unit, correct me if I'm wrong, J C, that would have been an apartment to be, apartment for somebody who needs one, who's there. I mean, it's, 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 it's macroeconomic.
No, I understand the whole, the whole trickle down effect.
But I'm not talking about affordable housing from a substitution.
Right, right.
Housing design played a great deal in my opinion, my whole process, it was just another, another. Choice of housing design, it wasn't a single family residence, you know.
Right.
I mean, it was a single family residence, but it wasn't a four fifteen type design, it was something different.
At, at the risk of, um. Pick and skate, I don't, personally, I don't think any of that's relevant, I think it's all about where it was. And I say this a lot up there, um. We had a rezoning request beside Creekwood one time for a straight multifamily rezoning. And we denied it because it was not right for the neighborhood. Um, so I think if, if this had been somewhere else, we, there was a, there was another rezoning the month before, two months before. For Drain Tree. And almost not identical, but really, really similar, I mean, multi-story. Uh, two buildings, and the people who showed up, I think there was one or two people showed up. And their question was, are we still gonna be able to park at the Drain Tree? I'm ser- I'm dead serious, that was it, that was it, and, and so. I'm just telling you, my, you know, my struggle is, if the room's full, great, but. I'll go back to that book, and I go back to the hundred and twenty thousand citizens in the city of Wilmington. And the fact that a hundred of them are here, I appreciate that, but ultimately, what's, what's that book telling us and. What's the right thing to do?
Well, this, this answered my question, because what, what it reinforces to me is, one of our big missions is to vet the hell out of these applications that we get.
Yeah.
You know, whether we approve them or don't approve them, ultimately, there, there's a portion of those unapproved are gonna come to you anyway on appeal. So our job is to, like I say, just vet this thing to no end, because, you know, taking that responsibility, literally, that, I got it. I, I mean, that, that answers my question.
Yeah, you said that.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of times, you've seen this, and we'll kick it back two weeks, sometimes two meetings, and we'll tell them to give back work with staff, work with the neighbors.
Yes.
Development, maybe not send it back to you all per se, but we do sit out and say, hey, there's just some questions here, need to be addressed. We don't have the answers, we don't want to fix this thing for the days, send it back, and you, you guys work with the community, work with our staff. Fix those things, and they come back, those, a lot of times, they do fix, they say, okay, we're, we're happy, but you know, you know, we can live with this.
Yeah.
We not like it, but it's better than what it was, you know, we may not send it all the way back, you know, I, I. I don't know for sure if we've ever sent one all.
Not that I, since I've been on the commission, I don't think we've ever had one.
We have sent a lot back.
Yeah.
Just delayed it two weeks, or, or meeting, two meetings before it comes back to us again.
I know you do, you do that a lot with the condemnations, and I guess that.
Even charging stations was one.
Yeah, 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 good, good, good stretch, yeah, yeah.
I know with county, they'll, they'll ask you, before they take their vote, do you want us to go ahead and, and vote? And, and they, they can kind of read tea leaves and say, well, you know, maybe we'll pull this. And sometimes people come before us, you know, they might wanna pull this back, it looks like you're gonna go down. And go back and, and come back with a, with a little better plan, or something like that, and they'll do that. And we, if they, if we voted down, what is it, six months now, or a year? Six months, six now.
We've had that at our level, where we've had applicants come in, and we get to the point where you, you, you look at the applicant and say. Are you going to make a, do I understand it right, that you're going to make a motion here in a minute to this be continued because of, you know, X, Y, Z, et cetera, et cetera? And that, that does happen on a, on a fairly regular basis, and I think that's probably where it should happen, is. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, so, but this, thi- this helps get my head right, so.
The other thing, there's something small too, is if they consider that the developer has a neighborhood meeting, years ago, that didn't happen.
Yeah.
And having that filter, you know, having that discussion with the neighborhood, before it even gets to you.
Be correct.
Is very helpful.
Yeah.
Is to, because they kind of get an idea of what the neighborhood may be supportive of, it may not. That's helped a lot.
Yeah, I, it has to.
You got really three public meetings, you got the neighborhood, you got the planning, and you got us, and sometimes it comes back. Sometimes you gotta send it back, and sometimes it's four meetings, five meetings, I mean, these things are. Say, very well thought out, in most cases, I mean, there may be somebody who say, I don't want anything, no matter what you do, and I get that too.
Yes, I was gonna say that, you know, John and Alvin Robinbark mentioned the idea, um, when we serve on council. Um, we're not just persuaded by the white church, orange church, green church, blue church. The number of people that pack the room, um, I think, like, I mean, most counties would say, we represent the whole one hundred and twenty five thousand. Balls in the city, and so the city that I try to make, always is the best interest of. Because what I think is best for the whole city. But I know people sometimes come and they hold the sign, and they.
Oh, yeah.
Look at your funding and problems, I'm not gonna vote for you and all of that. But I, I, I try my best to just see what's best for the city.
You do a good job.
Okay, and I appreciate you guys, and I do like Luke, watch you, um, I probably watch him as much as he does. I appreciate, you know, Harold, and I really appreciate the staff. Because, um, they helped me to see it kind of really clear, um, and so I really depend a lot on, on both of you guys. So that's.
Uh, we've got two, two little things, we just talked about. So we started looking at like, but public messaging, continuing education, I know that's a big, that's a discussion, especially in the development code. Sometimes, uh, people see it for a family that's in their backyard, so, oh my God, what they compliment me with this, what have you. Do I have any ideas, it's not probably a good, better job of messaging and in public education to this document. Pretty much in terms of what the city's almost like, next one, thirty minutes.
I think it's getting you all as council members. In the media as much as possible, I'll give you a great example, the. Land Development Code amendment that somehow turned into being able to, to de- develop on wetlands.
Yeah, over autumn.
Um, you know, where, where, we're a major, a major news organization in the city, that was the story that they promoted. And.
Misinformation.
A hundred percent, and I think, you know, planning commission members know, but I think elected officials, Luke, to your point as, as a leader, is to stand up and say. That's not right, that's not, not, you're not, you're not repining as to whether the amendment's good or bad, but this is not what it's about. I think the same is true of all the steps that are required through that, and through the comprehensive plan, and through staff's requirements with T R C. Of what a site goes through before anything happens. And I think the more the public hears that from councils, the more, the more. I, I never take it as an excuse that somebody says, I didn't know. And then you have not turned on a computer or your television, I mean, because I think the city does a great job of putting everything on the website, all this information's there. But I think sometimes it takes our leaders to say, hey, here's where you need to go to, to look for that.
You know, general, general comment and then a specific comment, I learned moving here from Cincinnati, I was president of the school board for ten years. And, and after several therapy sessions, I, I moved, um, my point is this, my point is. What I learned from that experience, and I think applies here, and it ties right to what John was saying, is. Just when you think you've communicated, you're not even close. You cannot over communicate, and it may be the simplest thing, it may be the most complex thing, but. I ju- I challenge all of us, whether it's council or planning commission, when we're out there with, you know, with friends and whatever, is, you can't. You can't communicate enough, you know, it's, you could, you just gotta keep at it, specifically, yeah, to, to, to your point, I mean, I've. I left the one meeting. Had an emergency at home and I had to leave the meeting, I got cornered by, and I don't, I don't know the press in town, and I'm kind of glad I don't, but. I got cornered, and it's probably same kinds of things you guys get, and it was trying to create an issue. With my vote versus my peers, I'm just not gonna do that, I mean, I answered it with, here's the process, here's, you know, yada, yada, yada. Um, I think another thing we could do, John, is maybe start doing as a commission, is, you know, we, we kind of have a preamble of things we have to read. You know, when we start every meeting, maybe we, you know, from a planning commission, inject, you know, here's just a mission statement. You know, just start repetitively with people that are listening, this is the mission of the planning commission, now here's the thing, here's how the thing works, and then we go into our business. Just some simple things like that. Could uh, you you know, could uh, I think help us a little bit. Cause I know when I talked to people about that Autumn Hall, you know, the men's club, it was amazing the, you know, what they didn't know. And what they, it was a classic. Yeah, a whole bunch of people worked up about something they really didn't know the detail. I know you're you're grinning.
No, I'm not, I'm not grinning. It it's. That's the norm.
But that's.
It's the norm because social media has changed.
Got it.
Dynamics. If you think W C D W A Y, which are bigger news organizations are gonna get that information now, is being done on social media.
Yeah.
Somebody on social media today that can be just a novice, doesn't even know what they're really talking about, puts it out there and sends it to the neighborhood is gossip.
Yes, 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 and that's.
And so.
So, um, like Jack, I served as an elected official in another state and one of the things we had there was called Citizens Planning Institute. And we uh, and I went through it and. It was, it was great information to get it out to the public. We also had instead of a comprehensive plan, they call it a general plan. It had to be approved by the voters by referendum. So you had to do the education portion of it to to, you know, to get the voters to pass it. And so and and then there was buy-in. Um, but as far as the uh, the the citizens academy and and they have them here in in North Carolina and I'm hoping that we we do that here. Um, and it's a great recruiting tool for boards and commissions and also an education component. For our citizens to understand not just how uh, planning works, but how the entire city works. And so um. To get people to go through it, it's a little, it's a, it's a different animal than, say, Leadership Wilmington. Um, because it's specifically, um, you know, how to be a good citizen and how the the city works and. Um, here are the ways that you can interact with the city and that we'd like you to interact with the city and uh, and 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 serve as a volunteer or. Maybe even run for office.
But I think here I gotta give you guys compliment your your, the new webpage and information on it, uh, I think is a great, a great step forward.
I feel like the information is there for the people who were um, very interested in going to look for it. I think it's really easy to find. Think what we, what the struggle is, how to reach people aren't looking for it and um, don't understand until they see something that is pleasing to them. So I think the information is there. Um, but if the goal is to get it out to. You know, the broader public that maybe hasn't considered development before and doesn't really know, then that is um, probably a requires a little more effort. Then go where the cost benefit is.
So what you're saying, J C, is if everybody in the public had to go through the same process, it may be different.
Well, on that, on that, just lie or that thread, um, the community meeting, which you mentioned is a. Such a fantastic component to the process. Um, I mean, having come into it blind, didn't realize that was happening. Yeah. High five, thumbs up, community meeting before even get to the next level. And like you said, I mean, some folks are just not gonna want anything, which was. Independence domain or whatever it was called. It was like obstinance that it's just gonna stay the same or we're probably not gonna do it. Well, that wasn't really a compromise. That was unyielding. So that was one of the few times in my experience on planning where we haven't had. The applicant amend the project to fit the neighborhood's desire. Because then it was just, they were just polarized. So, but at the community meeting. What if you had like a two-minute YouTube video that the developer could show? I mean, it's like a. Here's what Wilmington's trying to achieve. Here's why we're trying to achieve it. This is what, I know it's apartments in your backyard, but there's a reason for that. Just a random idea of an education piece. I mean, I, the Mr. Clifford. What's your last name?
Johnson.
You know, I mean, there's a room, there's a room full of people. We're all humans and like the beauty of the council is that you're above the fog of war. You're meant to be at the twelfth floor story, looking out over the city because you're not supposed to be personally affected and upset about it. So you're, you're making those leadership decisions and um, and yeah, a lot of the folks coming in, they just don't have a clue. So again, some of your planning commission members, they're kind of clueless of some of the problems the city was facing, but. Um, at our level, trying to meet that flag bearer and try to educate those folks when they. When we make our vote, you know, I may be nay, John may be a or vice versa, and we're kind of explaining ourselves, but. You couldn't do this two-hour brainstorm session. You guys don't have that kind of time.
Sure.
It's just, we're, we're, some of our meetings are three, four hours. It's hard to, it's hard to give them what they want, but you don't want them. A human being says, I kind of sympathetic with why you're concerned. I wish I could spend more time to like. Explain it to you. We just don't have that kind of time. So how do you, how do you bridge that gap for that public trust piece?
Well, I've probably done two hundred citizen meetings for the same thing before it gets to everybody else. I've given every one of them my business card. I give, told all of them they need to show up at the public hearing for. The commission or council, whatever it's called at the time in that jurisdiction. You should come, you should talk, you should speak. Be organized. Don't show up and everybody say the same three words because they're gonna quit listening to you at some point. I said, come in organized. And try to give them guidance on go through the process. And we're gonna win or lose, but we're gonna win or lose altogether, but I don't want you coming screaming the same. Things all the time. None of them will call, none, they don't call you back. They won't pick up the phone to discuss it with you. It is. Most of them are in the obstinate side regardless of what.
Just no change period.
Most of them, not, not all of them. And there are the ones in in Brunswick County. I have one, one lady and one man. That are, that's in every community meeting I do. I think that is wonderful because they are interested in. And I listen to what they have to say, talk about things. Um, they're usually bashing the commissioner, but that's. But again, it's that that education, I try to bring it from the standpoint of what I do for a living. And when I bring it on to the, to the commission of trying to explain why it is the way it is, not and and why this book guides us. Because most people, ninety percent, if not more of things you see, things we see. The folks that are out in front of you is the only time in five years they're gonna show up in that building to even worry about what's going on. My friends have never read this book. The ones that get a letter that their boat's gotta be put behind the house, can't figure out why that is. And you know, and it's, we even talk to, well, that's just stupid. It's my land. I'm like, you know, you you need to to go read it, go look it up. I got a friend that called me about a road closure. First thing I told him was that the road needs to be there. The access needs to be there. I said, I understand your point. I've known you've had it for so many years, but there's an easement on it. You don't have to open it up to traffic. There's a way to talk about it. But don't close the right way because it's needed for interconnectivity. And I think we keep beating that down the path. And I think your citizens academy is a, is a wonderful idea. I wonder how many folks are gonna show up to it. But then again, they.
I think there'll be a waiting list.
I think there can be two.
You don't know until you try it.
It's just a matter of what they're waiting for, so.
But but I think that citizens academy only gets the right participants if it's clear from the city's leadership, i.e. the council. As to what the objectives of the city are. And and unless you all tell me differently, I think it's. Everyone acknowledges that the growth's gonna continue. So um. One of my favorite memories, Celeste was with me at the time. Um, and Councilman Spears was with me at the time. But we were in a, let's just say, new community that eight years ago was pine trees. And we were all asked if we would uh, vote for a moratorium on development. And eight years prior, there was nothing there. And that that's what we see a lot of, or people that are like, what about my rights? Well, your property got developed two years ago, so you could buy your house or your condo or your apartment or whatever it is. So I think that's a great idea, as long as the city's communicating. Through council, what the objectives are and what the city's gonna continue to do to, in an effort to provide affordable housing and.
But tell the punchline of that story, John, is that we had.
Oh, we all voted no. We all said no.
We had seven people there from all different um, persuasions and um. Every single one of them, and that was probably the biggest forum that we had.
Yeah, it was probably the only time we all agreed too.
And every, every single person, when they asked, you know, would you vote for a moratorium on growth, every single person said no. So.
Right.
So I think there is, I think there is unity in that and and those people represented. Average citizens. They they weren't elected officials, but the the seven of us that were up there, um, some of them were running for reelection, but um. But yeah, I mean, we all understood that. So and I I I think the general public does understand that.
You know, you ride through Wilmington and if you have a list of projects that we have approved over the last twenty, twenty-five years. Ride through and look at them now, can't be gone to bed. I mean, it's, it's amazing. I mean, you. There are some developers that don't clear cut. They tailor their plan to meet what's out there, grand trees. Uh, specific species of trees and whatever. But by and large, uh, I see. A forest can regrow in twenty years. We got a lot of candidates. Uh, uh, if y'all have been up here, I hope you walk around toward the attorney's office and look for the vista.
Put the attorneys on the top floor.
Hey, to find them real quick when they needed them, I guess.
Bulletproof glass.
There you go. You know, one of the things I, and I really wanna put out a public thank you. I mean, this, this men's group that I belong to, I'm like. Kiddingly calling himself a geek. I'm a, I'm a government, the politics geek. I mean, I just live for it and it's probably. Probably, you know, not right, but it is what it is. But the point is. I can get seventy, eighty, ninety, you know, retired guys in a room and they come from all walks of life, you know, a lot of C-suite officers. I've had Bill out in front of the group last year and and talking about what's going on in the citizen. It was the best attendance we ever had. I've got Chief Williams coming in February. Uh, I've got one of the county commissioners coming in November, you know, after the election. And then Tony, I've got the information for you. Tony's gonna come out next year as well. And it's a, it's to. Talk about the central theme of a lot of this is like, how does the city of Wilmington operate? You know, when when Chief Williams comes, he's gonna have just presented to you guys the uh, the crime statistics. So that'll be really fresh news, you know, and stuff. But it's, it's the recognition that I got a room full of people that got a lot of opinions about something that they know about that much about. And so that, so that's, that to me, what's that? Yeah, I'll go absolutely. And then some. And it is, um, a lot of them are lawyers, so they're like, what do you mean a land use code, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But it's, it's at least one way to try to, to get that message out there that, you know, it's not just a bunch of people sitting in. The, you know, skyline center that could have been spelled C E N T R E, but we we didn't. Um, the uh, that's. Chad's my, you know, internal joke. It is, but the point is, is it's how you help people understand. How the, how the, the business of city government works and why it works the way it does. Is it perfect? No, ne- never will be. But can, is there continual improvement going on? Yeah, absolutely. We wouldn't be sitting here if there wasn't. So.
The um, the interview that our chair, J C, had with Kelly Knoyer on W H P R. Public news, that was really educational for me. I mean, I've sit and get the privy to J C's thoughts as she shares it at different meetings on different topics. And I did, I learned a lot from you and and I just, I'm at info seeking, you know, so. But that was even a deeper dive into, you know, what's in your head and just like, that was beautiful and great. Um, you know, I know you may have misspoken or didn't wanna say exactly. It's funny when you're in like an environment like this, you may wanna redact something. Type it up perfect, but I mean, just on the fly and off the cuff, it was fabulous. To hear all the council members. You know, to hear what's your thought process if it's really positive. I mean, it kind of gives us, for me personally, I speak. More courage to be that advocate piece, that public messaging piece. Again, just like, here's, Wilmington's a great place. We all wanna live here. Full disclosure, when I was fifteen, I was a fan of Raise the Bridge. You know, I didn't want any more surfers coming to the sea. You know, it was kind of territorial. But now I realize, you know, we gotta close the bridge, let as many people come enjoy this place and, you know, not feel entitled to keep it all to ourselves.
Yes, I want you to quit. Yeah, this is, I think this is as much a status and for us, visuals. Engineers and land planners understand this stuff pretty, you guess, how it's technical, right? From a visual perspective, when we're trying to show the community what we're trying to do, which is feel a bit better looking city. And you're trying to put those visuals, that may be a description, maybe just an example of what we're thinking about here. What are you guys thinking? A lot of the public react to it. I know how a council would react to it because I think a visual. To me, it it has a bigger impact. People see what you're trying to do instead of, I'm gonna put this wall this high, I'm gonna try to protect these many.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can talk about the development code and sometimes people look at some, you know. You still reading, I need a lawyer to get to it. That's why I see lawyers presenting those things. It's engineers. It's a, it's a tough code. I mean, people. Well, you do go through the stuffs.
I I think.
But I think, yeah, I think the community doesn't have perspective as to what is going.
The optics. I almost brought it with me, Danny's got his architectural drawing. So I had to, as a junior commissioner. I had to go to Kinko's or whatnot and print the land develop, I mean, not land, the comprehensive plan, the seven, how many, there's seven maps. Five, seven maps. Turned it on our, you know, the big ones. And then, cause then I could lay it out on the table. Wow. And then you can really look, that's optics, like, like being on the twelve-four here, while I can really see. From the coaching box what is happening. But if you're just trying to look at on this thing, that's almost impossible. So that's. That's been really beneficial to me, but you couldn't really achieve that from the public piece, um.
Well, different parts of it.
Different.
I I think it's hard for the public anyway, really grasp it until you see some example of it. Setbacks, when you, why do you wanna leave the buildings closer to the road, put the parking in the rear? This is what we're trying to do, Jack, in here. Stuff of that nature where, you know. I I just think the visual is much more powerful, powerful to the general public. It's not worse than this stuff. Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, you know.
I think you're almost in like a, a marketing component there messaging where you've got three, you know, quickly, three different angles. You could do a verbal interview like J C has on W H G R. You could go play that. If someone has thirty minutes. Most people aren't gonna even take thirty minutes to listen to it. You've got, you know, your, your visuals and your pictures. It's a big, beautiful plan. The the comprehensive plan, I I think is everyone's done a fabulous job over the decades of, I mean, but it's, you've gotta get it printed like this and it's seven maps. So I mean, you know, if the Sax pair wanna fund like a two-minute video. I mean, that's an optic.
Are you saying from an applicant's standpoint, when applicants coming in?
I think staff or recommendations, what they're trying to promote, what is the land is playing, how is it tying together. Think all of that ties into some visual aspect of what we're trying to achieve here. As opposed to, I wanna clear cut all the trees. I don't care about stormwater and I don't care if you put driveways on the Independence Boulevard. That's fine for me. That's what I'm saying. And I think they were trying to make that, uh, you know, trying to make that example and they said, this is what we're gonna stand for. Well, some of them they say, that's not what I'm willing to stand for. The land development code tells me to save the trees, walkability setbacks and stuff of that nature. And you're gonna take care of my stormwater. That's what I'm trying to, I guess the objective is, is if you, as a, as a developer, you have as much. Responsibility to, to show that example.
Yeah.
And they do, in in most cases, as anyone. And but I think we as a city also has, have some responsibility. Share with the general public what our objectives are, that 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 don't even tie into a particular piece of property which being reserved. But we're, what we're trying to achieve here, maybe before this stuff even gets to a development stage. This is the objective that we're trying to do. If we wanna go into, to a neighborhood, let's just say, and just say, we've got two hundred acres here. We don't know what's gonna be built there, but we know we have a land development code. It's gonna be tied into it. This is what could happen here. This is what it might look like.
The trouble is you have it, you know, you've developed it. It's, it's, it's amazing. It's just, it takes time and most people are just not gonna keep.
Well, I think so. I think with the initial development, we're surrounded by neighborhoods now. I think there's gonna be a lot more interest in how that neighborhood. How that piece of property is gonna be developed in the future.
Take, take what you, take what you're saying and put it on item number four, housing issues and strategies. I mean, I, I would purport that that's probably one of the single biggest things that people are confused about. In in the city of Wilmington, you know, what are you, what are you trying to accomplish? You know, obviously, what you, what you're trying to accomplish is gonna relate to what can be done in the land development code. You've got incentives that I know you guys discussed back and forth and and the staff recommends and whatever, but it's, I go back to it's, here's, you know, a visual, you know. And and I like your point, maybe it's a visual that you tack on to the, to the city webpage. Cause I know, you know, when, when Tony comes out and presents, he's gonna have visuals. Donnie's gonna have visuals, but on that as a specific, big, general topic, yeah, I think that's a candidate that says. Here's what we're trying to accomplish. Here's the issue. Here's what we're trying to accomplish, or or here's why it's an issue. Here's what we're trying to accomplish. Um, examples, here's where we're making progress. And this is why it's important to everybody in this city. I mean, I think that's a, that's a twenty-minute. Twenty-minute, you know, visual that would be extremely important.
Because we can take a visual of what we don't want.
Yeah.
Park the street.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Which was the. Which was developed in the 60s and 70s, we don't want that.
Yeah, I hear you.
What we're about, that's what we're trying to change. And what we're trying to, what we're trying to emulate is this.
This is gonna sound oversimplified, but I've got some like strong opinions about this because before my time on commission, I was like presenting to commission, right? So you have to, you have to think a lot about what is gonna sort of most successfully tell my story. And, you know, again, I don't think that this is very clear in the requirements for rezonings, but you know, there's an informational component, like what is it? What are the metrics? What are the density? There's basically the technical side of it. How does it actually meet the intent of that book?
Right.
But then what often gets left out is that what I think you're hitting on is, what's the experiential component? Right? Because if you can understand projects from those three, um, sort of barstool legs, I think you have a pretty good ability to comprehend, do I support it? Is it appropriate? You know?
Yeah.
Because there are different ways that you need to understand these from an applicant. And, and I mean, I tell applicants who sometimes will reach out to me um, to ask me that question, and I kind of boil it down in that way, partly because that's what I'm looking for as a commissioner. And that's what I used in the past to kind of communicate my own ideas.
Well, those are, um, a lot of great ideas floating around and they're very project-specific. And I think if we wait until some, until people are looking at the project, it's too late to educate.
Yeah.
Cause they've already got their emotions turned on and they can't learn anything when you're worked up about something. So I think it's, um, wise to get ahead of it, um, and has some more strategies to get those.
Into that, I, I totally agree, um, still Madam Chair. Yeah, um, I think that, you know, sounds corny, but you know, a YouTube of staff of like, here's, here's when we say put multifamily closer to the road, here's what we're talking about. And go shoot a video of the Hawthorne project where Title Creek is. You know, and I don't know how many of y'all go there, but on Saturday, there's a farmer's market in the middle, got Title Creek. You drive by those apartments now and hardly realize they're there because the tree canopy has grown up on Oleanders so much. That to me was like, wow, that worked. And there goes a traffic light right there, like let's highlight that success to show people as an example, here's a mixed juice node. You know, and, and this is what it's not gonna look like during construction, but it will ultimately.
You know, this is all about change. A lot of this is about change, is how people cope with change. You know, and, and especially people moving down, you know, that 1% moves down and they're, um, expecting to have Wilmington look like what they left, and the only reason they left was taxes and, and weather. And my comment has always been, yeah, but this is a, this is a totally different area. And it's a, it's a different vibe, it's a different look, and hopefully that's why, you know, you move down, I mean, that's why I moved down here. And, you know, so it's, it's, it's just part of that, you know, just continually like, I keep saying, just when you thought you, you made the, the right presentation and you've said everything there is to say, you're not even close. So we just all collectively have to keep challenging ourselves, you know?
Maybe we have a little, um, task force to me, this money is after that, I feel this, to kind of put together some, um, public information that might need, uh, taxing for the staff who's already.
While I'm here, it's Catherine's doing YouTube videos.
Social media page, some of this, that's entertaining maybe as an entertainment value and interesting to people who.
I think you might get some council members that'd be interested to do some sort of educational piece. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think I just heard a volunteer, um, to head that up. I, I just, at some point I was gonna say this, um, I've only known one chairman on the planning commission since I've been here, so, we hate to see her roll off and I hope in 366 days we might see you again. I, I don't think people realize the amount of time she spends advancing the cause for 125,000 people in Wilmington.
Thank you.
You're doing a outstanding job. You're all doing a standing job, you really are. The great thing about Wilmington is that I'm moving in and moving out. That tells me a lot about the community and the people I see. And, um, it's a, it's a great community and it's obviously evolving and changing, as most cities like this, I just really appreciate, appreciate all the important services, I know it's nice, I know it's nice. We've got some good information for this and, um, I think the land development code is the battle, uh, is the cooperative battle, and I think we need to do a better job in telling that story to the public, what is it, and I think that if they understand and they see it, I think, I'm not saying they can always agree with us, but I think they're a lot more supportive than what we have seen because sometimes they're just not safe. And for those residents and citizens that were not part of the process, or, you know, part of the, involved in it, but where we are, it's hard to, you know, to tell them that this has been something that was three years in the making. It was very difficult, but, but I think you guys did good, good comments and good feedback from you folks. We appreciate everything you've done. And, um, anything that we can do for the audience. And I'm sure you will.
I would like to reiterate, uh, what I said earlier about somebody, uh, planning commission attend our, uh, ad hoc transportation.
Oh, yeah.
It's very important, lasts about an hour and a half, two hours.
Is that a certain day a month or is that?
Yeah.
But it's a wealth of information to get and it enables you to go out and be able to speak to some of the people that want your ad.
Thank you for the opportunity.
This stuff needs to be done just once in a while when we, somebody thinks of it, this needs to be on a regular basis. And I mean, so.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.